Okay, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, December 3rd, 2018, and the time is 6:11. And this is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council, held a little earlier in the evening due to a public hearing on truth and taxation. So at this time, my name is Rich Nagel, I'm the mayor, and I'll be presiding at the meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will have roll call. Councilmember Haddelstedt, welcome back.
Thank you.
Here. Councilmember Ryszewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Hyland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
All councilmembers are present. At this time, is there, are there any changes in the agenda? I do see some in front of me that would be items A through D would be scratched for minutes of four meetings.
Unfortunately, we've had a staff member who's up sick and with a workload as such, we're a little bit behind, so I apologize.
We'll catch those at the next meeting. All right, then, all the others then would be renumbered, E through I would become A through E for purposes of reference. Are there any other additions to the agenda? If not, motion is in order to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Haddelstedt, second by Councilmember Hyland to approve the agenda with the deletions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. We will then move into the approval of the consent agenda, consisting of five items. Item A, approval of the November 26th special council workshop meetings, minutes, you got those this evening. Item B, approval of the bills. Item C, approval of renewal, annual solid waste recycle dumping permits for Renville Civil Sanitation, Gaylord Sanitation, and Waste Management. Item D, approval of 2019 fire department recruitment and retention incentives, including $500 signing bonus, $50 increase in Fire Relief Association annual benefit, for a total of $1,650, and $600 longevity pay for 10-15 year volunteer firefighters, and $1,200 for 15 or more year firefighters. And lastly, item E, approve hiring Sarah Jankowski and John Pedersen as EMTs for Arlington Ambulance pending successful completion of training and testing.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batchor to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. There are public hearings this evening, so at this time, I will recess the regular meeting and open the annual truth and taxation public hearing. City Mayor Mr. Trigger-Mellon.
Good evening, councilmembers. This evening, I'm just going to go through a very brief review of the 2019 budget. As I think we all know, it's been kind of a challenge, but we are getting close to the finish line. So what I've prepared for you is a brief presentation looking at what we have proposed, which is a 6% increase in the budget. So the budget process, I think we all would agree, had some ups and downs, and hopefully with one under our belt, next year will be much easier and simpler. I know from my perspective, I learned a lot when I finally got to spend some time talking with Abdo, Ike and Myers, working with some of their staff on it helped answer a lot of questions. So I did, will have a bill associated with working with them, but it was what was needed to get the budget done. So we started out the process on Friday, September 28th. At that time, the council approved a preliminary levy increase of 6%. Since that time, we've had a number of different budget workshops where we've gone over some of the expenses that we have. I will say that 2019, we did have some pretty significant projects that we're tackling, which I think is a good thing, because we're actually able to resolve some of those big issues, but it also does require additional financial resources. So we're here-
Is that okay, Pat?
Yep, perfectly fine.
Flip the things so we can see the screen.
Okay.
There we go.
I'll get it in here somehow.
You can pull both up, that's fine.
I was trying to get it on the console and on the slide, but it doesn't want to go to the com- All right, we'll just run with getting the slides on there. All right, we'll just run with getting the slides on there. So tonight, we're here to explain kind of what are the factors that are impacting our 2019 budget, and to share with any members of the public what is driving costs and what the council is doing in order to try and address those issues. So we will not be making a final decision here tonight. We will be having some discussion and review, and then, being that we don't have any residents in the audience, we will be looking to make a final decision on Monday, December 17th. At that time, we will approve a 2019 budget for the city of Arlington. So we'll jump right into what we are looking at for 2019, general fund levy. We are increasing the general fund levy quite significantly this year because of the significant projects that we have slated, and we'll talk about those projects later. But we're looking at a 10 and a half percent increase, looking, you know, at what we've done in the past. Typically, what our general fund budget has been increased by has been 2016, 2%, 2017, 1%, 2015, it remained the same. So this is a pretty significant jump for the city of Arlington to have so much reliance on the general fund for funding of operations. Other levies are tax abatement at 3.8%. That number's pretty small. We currently have Golden Hearts that is benefiting from tax abatement, and I do believe coming up at some point in the future, we will have Ninkazi that will be getting tax abatement through the city. Looking at the 2015 fire pumper, we have the same amount of money going to pay for debt as we did last year. The 2015 street and utility costs are increasing from $50,018 by $5,000. The community center debt, which will actually be coming off in 2019, is going from $47,000 up to $50,000. 2009 general obligation bonds are jumping up quite significantly from $5,000 to $47. In order to kind of cushion that flow, we also have the 2012 bonds going from $70,000 down to $5,000. So, and then the 2017 GEO bond going from $51,800 up to $56,194. So what you'll see is, pretty much every year, you'll see these bond payments as part of the annual budget. The numbers will fluctuate. What causes those numbers to fluctuate is if we have significant reserves. Oftentimes, on like these street improvement projects, you'll have individuals who will be assessed a certain dollar amount. Those individuals are allowed to pay 5% or whatever that number is each year, and eventually pay it off. Sometimes people choose to go ahead and pay those assessments early, which then puts more money into that account, and if we see that there's significant funds there, we may say, you know what, we've got enough money here, let's lower the amount that we're levying because we've got some money that we can simply apply towards it. So that's how we come up with, looking at our overall levy increase of 6%. Again, the increase on the general fund levy, as well as those various bond payments that we have to make. Here's just a breakdown. The general fund makes up about 72% of the overall budget, and then those other smaller pieces kind of fit in there to come up with our total overall budget. Are there any questions on anything?
I do believe you mentioned about the abatement, tax abatement?
Correct.
Do I think Sem- is Semestone part of that also? I think Semestone is.
You know, I think you might be right. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm surprised that that number's so small, but perhaps Golden Hearts has kind of slid down and maybe Semestone.
Falling down towards the limit.
I will look into that and-
Either it is or isn't, it's all, yeah.
Yes.
It's fine.
But, good point. Just looking at the bar chart of where we have gone with our levy dating all the way back to 2006, I think as we've talked about in the past, 1% of our levy is equal to about $8,000, roughly $8,000. As you can see, we're looking at making a jump from 2018 to 2019, they're about $50,000, which is equal to that 6% increase. Because we do have significant projects, we are pulling from reserves to fund some of those, which is not reflected on this. It's obviously taken, over time, that we've been able to save up money, and some of those monies will be spent down now as we're looking for sources to fund projects. Here's a list of how we did with regards to the general fund. The general fund is comprised of a number of different department budgets. We can just briefly go through, and I'll let you know kind of what's driving some of the different increases, or in some cases, possibly decreases. The council is actually looking at a decrease. That was based on removal of some computer funding that we talked about recently. I think we took $1,000 away from that. Also, I think that part of the speculation was maybe there weren't going to be as many workshops, and that's, I don't know, we'll see how that all turns out. So we'll hope there won't be as many workshops, but we will certainly progress and see what happens. The administration department budget increased from 2018, where it was $245,790, increasing up to $253,442. That increase is being driven by the addition of a staff person, and I shouldn't say a full-time staff person, but 12 additional hours that were being given to the new employee that's in administration. So what the council had previously approved was for September, October, November, and December, to have a staff person at 32 hours with prorated benefits. And it was my understanding, without vacation, it wasn't specified, or it just wasn't brought up, but it was my understanding was without holiday pay, that position has done a good job of filling in for an employee who's currently out on leave and will be coming back in January. So that has added some cost to the administration department, a total of about $7,000 above what that pre-existing halftime position was. The next item, elections. You're probably wondering why we have an expense in elections when we don't have an elections year. It's because there will be voting equipment that will be purchased in 2019, and typically, we have split that cost with the township. However, the township has an option to go to mail ballots, and I don't know for sure that they are going that direction, but I know there's been discussion. If they do go to the mail ballot, the cost of that equipment will all be on the city of Arlington. So that's why $3,200 is included in that budget. Assessing, we have a contract for 2019 that the fees will remain the same for law, legal services. As you can see, we've got an increase in that area, simply because of the fact that now we have a police department that is going to be fully staffed. When you add officers, you add additional work. I think Ross is here. Ross, I think we've seen an increase in the workload for you.
It's not just that we're fully staffed, we're fully staffed with energetic officers.
Yeah, true.
I would say that their issuing of citations is, you know, at least double, you know, some of our past police staff. But they're, you know, they're good at rest. Had some discussions with the chief, our young patrol officers, as could be expected, are sometimes a little too enthusiastic, you know, stopping people maybe where, wasn't, you know, completely necessary. And he's counseled them, and I think they're adjusting quite well. So not having too many stops anymore because the license plate light is out. Technically, there's somebody for that, but you normally don't. So, but, you know, they're doing an excellent job, but yeah, the volume is way up.
Planning and zoning, they're increasing from, their budget is increasing from 44, roughly $45,000, up to $60,700, in part because of the inspections. So with Northland drying and with Ninkazi coming onboard, there's a lot more work that the building inspector is having to do to go out there and check, and make sure that things are built, being built in compliance with existing standards. So it's a good problem to have. That means there's more businesses and different things happening within town. Buildings and plants costs went up slightly just because buildings are getting older, and we need to budget a little bit more to cover anything that needs to, anything that could pop up and catch us by surprise. Next item is the police department. Police department budget has grown significantly because of the addition of a moving Vicki, whose current position is halftime to full-time, but then also adding in a police officer to that overall mix. So the cost of bringing Vicki onboard full-time is roughly $25,000, and then a police officer is about $65,000 if you add in the possibility of that person getting family health insurance. So those costs, and then just when you add police officers, you add some training costs, and you add some different things associated with that. Fire stations have stayed pretty consistent in terms of their 2019 budget. The council found, what, the other evening, found in civil defense, we had about $700 in there. That was for telephone line, which used to be for the phone connection so that you could activate the siren. That is no longer needed, so we were able to trim a little out of there. And we also have animal control, which has been consistently at about $600. Are there any questions?
One follow-up comment on the police department. Of course, with many more citations being written, there is a significant increase in fines collected, but the police activity is never going to be a profit-making activity, or at least it shouldn't be. I always remember one small town in Georgia, I think, you know, 90% of the city budget was funded by their speeding tickets.
Right.
But they were shut down by the state supreme court there, I think, eventually.
Where does the money go back into the city from citations and such that we get?
That's a good question. I don't know. Does that go back in the police budget?
In the revenue section of the police budget?
I'm gonna have to look into that, because I, I would assume that it probably goes into the general fund.
Yeah.
That would be my assumption, but I will make note of that and follow up.
It'd make more sense to have it in the police department on line item coming in there, so we kind of have a better gauge on-
Yep, yep.
-that budget.
Because some of them would go into law and legal to-
Right.
You know, with your trips over to Gaylord and not having them-
Yeah, logically, it could, yes.
Some of it could, anything attributable to those tickets.
We also have public works that has actually gone down from what they were at in 2018 to 252,386. I think it was, those changes were just based on the numbers that were coming in, being a little lower than what was projected in 2018. Street lighting, we've got at $11,818. Slight decrease in 2019 at $11,500. One of the items that may stick out is, isn't that something that we're gonna do in 2019 with regards to purchasing and replacing streetlights? And yes, that is. That will actually be, will be kind of an ongoing, kind of like a bonding project. What we'll do is, we'll end up, the city will end up paying 57, 52, 57,000 as the first, the down payment, and then they will qualify for a 75% loan going forward, 10-year interest-free loan, to go ahead and to purchase and install the lights. So that would be a significant benefit for the city to do that. So that'll be with Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op that they're making that interest-free loan available. The parks and recreation budget increased slightly. One of the things that I should bring up is that I know that the Parks, Park and Recreation Committee has enjoyed, you know, purchasing picnic tables and trying to get the city in the position of having a consistent style of picnic tables, quality picnic tables. That was one thing that did not make it into the 2019 capital improvement project. So that's something that will have to be relayed to the committee at some point. Libraries, libraries increased in 2019 by 7,000. One of the things that I'm currently exploring further is, there was a change that occurred in 2017, and it used to be that the city was paying for salaries of Kathy Omi and some of the other staff out there. In 2017, that transition occurred, where now the county is paying for that, and the city is simply cutting a check to the county. I think we may be able to find some additional money there that would help us to possibly go back, and as you may recall from our last discussion, we were trying to balance the general fund, so revenues would be equal to expenditures. I think I need to talk with Kathy, but I think we may be able to find some extra money there to help make that happen. So I will let you, the council, know, once I'm able to look into that further, I will send out an email letting you know where we are with that. For right now, and for tonight's purposes, we're looking at a $47,788 budget for the library in 2019. Economic development, $21,510 in 18. We're increasing that budget because the, this last year, economic development was quite active. Significant expenses were incurred, working with Jason Primright, the city engineer, to put together some plans for a possible land acquisition that would be used to create an industrial park. I believe that a lot of, a lot of that time spent working with Jason may have been charged against a different account and not the EDA account, even though the EDA account does have a line item for engineering fees. So a little extra money was put into that line item for 2019. You know, that may not be needed if the council is giving the directive to, you know, let's wait and see what happens versus being out there on the front end of acquiring property and then waiting for something to happen. Lastly, we have the transfers, and this is the money that gets moved between accounts. Typically, the transfers occur from the general fund, from the medical center revenues, which medical center we get about $102,000 that comes in. Oftentimes, those funds are restricted to healthy initiatives within the community. So compared to 2018, we are slightly, just a little bit less that we're gonna be transferring in 2019. So $331,600 that'll be transferred within different budgets in 2019. Are there any questions? So I'll briefly go through the capital improvement plan and the projects that we have slated for 2019. Typically, what we've done in the past is we've allocated $95,000 to crack sealing. This 2018 was kind of a unique year in that we didn't do that. Instead of doing any crack sealing and seal coating, what we did is we applied that $95,000 towards the Second Avenue overlay project, which came in above that at about $140,000, but the $95,000 was applied to that. Kirby did talk with Jason, and Jason thought, you know, our roads are in pretty good shape, or you don't need to spend that money. Also, in talking with Jason, I asked him, is that ninety-five thousand, is that where we need to be at each year? And he said, that's aggressive, ninety-five thousand is aggressive. So for two thousand and nineteen, at least, we've lowered that number to fifty thousand to help us fund some of the other projects that we have in the making.
Is that crack sealing and seal coating?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, I should have, yeah, crack sealing as well as seal coating. So, and we did do seal coating in two thousand, or crack sealing in two thousand and eighteen of about, was it ten, fifteen thousand, Kirby?
Ten grand.
Ten grand, okay, so. Another project that we have is extending utilities to the Minkazi parcel on the southwest side of town. That money that we will be spending of a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. We hope that comes in lower than that, but that's what we have budgeted. That will be matched by money from deed in the amount of ninety-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. So we are looking to pay for that expense out of the water fund. We'll pay for reserves there, we have currently over six hundred thousand in that account currently. So we have the money to assist with that payment. And it makes sense that, you know, that we have a utility fund pay for extending utilities to a new business. The next item that we have is the eight hundred megahertz communication system. It's been something that Chief Pedersen has identified as a real problem. And I think you as a council have said this is a priority, priority that we need to address. We're quite fortunate that we have been dealing with it, we have been having meetings. We did have some representatives, as well as a senator, out here and talked about it. And in doing so, we stirred up some, some excitement, but also made some people nervous, I think. So when the county went ahead and applied for a grant from the state emergency communications board, we were awarded a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollar match that would be based on the city paying a portion as well as the county paying a portion of the overall fee. So we are bringing a significant amount of money into the city to help us accomplish some of these big projects, which is something that, you know, is very beneficial to residents. We talked about the street lights which are on there, and then I also have the squad car listed at forty-five thousand. I know that you received an email from Chief Pedersen. We'll have to, we can certainly have some discussion on the seventeenth and decide kind of where that's going to go. In that email, he shared some changes that have occurred since we last talked about it, so. Are there any questions on the capital improvement plan? Okay, well, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Pretty big nutshell.
Pretty big nutshell.
I kind of like this atmosphere, kind of cozy and warm.
Trying to wake up.
Yeah.
You have to close.
It just blows him off a little bit.
All right. Is there any input from the audience with us tonight? We have John Zaski representing the fire department and Kirby Wickworth representing the maintenance department. Also, I forgot to mention on my left, city administrator Pat Melvin, on my right, city attorney Ross Arnison. Is there any other input as far as the hearing is concerned? If not, I would like a motion to close the hearing at this time?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion by council member Batra, second by council member Yashewski to close the truth and taxation hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried, the hearing is closed, and then we'll move back into the regular agenda. Are there any, or is there anyone wishing to address the council, other than where you are on the agenda? Both of you are out there, so hearing none, we'll move on to announcements.
First announcement is just a reminder to the council that on December seventeenth at six-thirty, there will be a public hearing for the two thousand and nineteen street and utility improvement project. Again, this is the project that will be occurring over on Clinton and Baker Street as part of a two, roughly two point four million dollar infrastructure improvement project. The, speaking with Laura today, she has provided notice to the newspaper, so that will be in the paper for two different times. And then individuals will be notified of what their assessment will be. So if they wish to come and share their opinions regarding the project, they can do so and learn more about the project. Second announcement is that the city offices will be closed on Monday, December twenty-fourth at noon, as well as all day on Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, in observance of the Christmas holiday. Third item, city offices will also be closed on Tuesday, January first, in observance of the New Year's holiday. Last but not least for announcements, we have the League of Minnesota Cities Experienced Officials Training, which will be occurring February first through the second in Plymouth, or February twenty-second through the twenty-third in Brainerd. So if any council members are interested in attending that training, please feel free to let me know. And we, in administration, would be more than happy to make sure that you get registered for accommodations as well as attendance, so.
Okay, any questions in regard to the announcements? Move on to communications, do you have any, or I'm unlisted, so, okay. With that out of the way, we'll move on to item nine, fire department update. Chief Saski, you want to come forward, please, make sure that mic is on. All right, the floor is yours.
I'm here to request the permission to hire five new firefighters. We have four open positions, but we will have some retiring here within months. Twenty nineteen, I expect to have some retiring, they've already told me, and twenty twenty is gonna be a big year for a lot of retirees. So we'll go over thirty, we'll go to thirty-one for a short period, then we'll drop back down.
It's exciting, I'm happy to hear it, well, not that we're gonna lose, but that we're gaining five, that's, that's great.
Yeah. Very good.
After you had us panicking.
Twenty twenty is gonna be a big one. We're gonna lose a lot in twenty twenty.
Are the new members, are they new to town? I don't recognize any of their names, so they're brand new.
Two names.
They're all within the last year or so, they won't get down. Excuse me, one of them actually was on the Hamburg Fire Department, so we won't have to pay for any training or anything.
Oh, nice.
They'll just have to do a physical and then we can come on right away. Get it formal, we'll have to go through schooling.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to that?
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of five, the five applicants that the chief provided us with.
Second.
Who had that?
Adam.
Motion by council member Batra, second by council member Cowal to approve the hiring of five new firefighters. This was requested by Chief Saski. And when would they start then, or what is it?
I'd have to get a hold of them and I'll have to get their physicals. Actually, in two weeks, there's a class already starting for level one firefighting class. So I'm hoping, I already talked to South Central, even if I can't get them to make the first few classes, they'd make up, make a date up for us to catch them back up. Since we have four of them, that would be eligible to be firefighters with your permission.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Okay, congratulations, that's a nice.
Second time, though, I guess I have been the fire chief for the biggest department in the county, and for City Arlington.
Nice.
Good.
Do you have any questions on the SOGs?
There wasn't any really major changes, there was a couple.
The biggest, well, I know what John talked about, but the biggest change, I think, was the getting your stuff done within forty-five days of everybody else, or of the main testing.
Yeah, after we thought about that, we thought, whoa, what if there was sickness or somebody was called a jury duty? So there would have to be some kind of a chance that they could address the call, so to give permission to extend it. That was the whole reason behind that. Does it only be fair to them if they had jury duty or something to complete the classes?
Page two, at the bottom, responding to emergency calls, item two. That is sort of confusing to me, as far as all firefighters shall abide by the City of Arlington drug and alcohol policy. When responding to any call, zero tolerance for medicals and driving apparatus. What's that?
The fire trucks.
Why don't we just put fire trucks then?
Because they do drive the Ranger too.
Why don't we put any vehicle then?
I don't know if you can call a Ranger a vehicle.
Okay. That, that, I stopped and I said, what is driving apparatus? But I mean, now that you explained it, it's fine, but.
And that is in the city policy, the driving, with zero tolerance for alcohol, but we thought we should move it over from the city policy into our SOGs.
Could we just add the word fire department apparatus, driving fire department apparatus?
It's.
Meaning then?
However you guys want to word it.
I guess I would, you know, if, if we have a document that people are supposed to read and understand, maybe I'm just a dummy, but I came across and thought, well, what, what is that?
Well, we could, but driving any vehicle.
But he said.
That's not vehicle?
Was Ranger considered a vehicle?
Could you just say zero tolerance for medicals and driving and not say what you're driving? I mean, if you're driving a.
That would be our last question.
Well, how about medicals and operating city equipment?
There you go.
Okay, would that be, that would solve it, I mean, that would.
Or leave it as is and tell the individual who doesn't know what it is, what it is.
When we say operating city equipment, that would include things other than just driving, because if you have a.
It'd be a tractor, it could be a.
Yeah.
Yes, because when we had the flooding, we were driving dump trucks, payloads, tractors, we were driving everything.
That makes sense.
So what was it again?
Operating.
Operating.
Operating city.
City equipment. The zero tolerance for medicals thing, what does that, that refers to?
That's pretty much across the boards for any medicals with.
In other words, are they respond to?
Yeah, we don't even.
An accident or?
We don't want patient care, we don't want you touching them, nothing. Because if we end up in court and they smell the alcohol and somebody's pissed, that would be bad.
Yeah. And driving any city equipment, is that?
Operating, yeah.
Operating any city equipment?
And operating city equipment.
Okay. City equipment, okay. Anything else on that? Do we need a motion to approve that, I suppose?
Yes.
It would be good.
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes, number two, that are operating city equipment on page, that was page two.
Page two, item two.
Item two, make a motion to approve that.
Okay, I need one second.
Second.
Motion by council member Batra, second by council member Yashewski to approve the Arlington Fire Department standard operating guidelines with the specified changes.
I think I see a typo.
Do you? Tell us where it is.
Under responding to emergency calls, number three, all firefighters must enter the hall through the man doors.
Oh, yeah.
I would say main doors.
No, man is correct.
Man doors?
Is correct.
Oh, really? Okay, that means a walk-in door as opposed to an overhead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
I've never heard it referred to that.
I haven't either, you better call it man.
Got a joint head or woman department, then you'll know.
Person.
Actually, Laura called me on that, so I Googled the definition and I sent it back to her. She goes, oh, I learned something today.
Yeah.
Service door, service door.
I call it service door or.
Main door.
Gender neutral door.
That's what it'll be next.
Okay. Okay, you've all heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried.
Start working on twenty twenty.
You know, you know what I want in twenty twenty.
He's gonna ask for retirement.
Something even more difficult than that.
Oh, really?
Big green thing, big green thing.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Green licorice.
Okay, item ten, maintenance department update.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hey, well, I was in the last meeting, so kind of are pretty well caught up. But the last two weeks, obviously, we were busy with Christmas lights, getting all those up. We wound up replacing almost a thousand of the old incandescent bulbs on the, on the buildings to LED bulbs. So that was, that took some time, out of the dazzle. Of course, we helped out with that, setting up and cleaning up. It's taken up some time. We, beginning of this week, the curbs were actually good enough to sweep again, so we tried to get a full sweep in from the last batch of leaves that fell. We came up just a few streets short, but we got quite a bit done, actually, in the two days that we were able to get out. That's kind of been a lot of our time, really. And then coming up, our new truck came in, new plow truck came in last Friday, I wanna say. We'll be getting that down to Crystial and Lake Crystal, get the plow and put on it and mounted. They're gonna do that this Friday, it takes a full day. That was the soonest I could get it in, so we'll have to pick it up the next Monday after the weekend. And then we'll have our new plow truck ready to go, so it's exciting. Skating rink, that's the next kind of project to do, to get done, that people are probably getting anxious for. I'll be out until the end of this week, and I hate to pin that on Mike to get those boards up, because I've done that by myself. And it's, it's a backbreaker, so I don't wanna get my guy hurt. So more than likely, that rink will be up next week, and we'll start to try making ice.
It's really not cold enough to make good ice.
I, I'm afraid it's not, for some reason.
When it's seven twenties during the day.
Yep, if the sun shines, the sun still has enough power to melt it, but, and for some reason, under that shelter, that's, the hockey rink, takes a while for that to get cold enough for the ground under there.
Mm-hmm.
But we'll be working on that, trying to get that up for the skaters.
I think it will get cold, it's thirty Friday, down around zero, so.
Yeah, this would be a perfect week, but, uh, it was a short week, Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving week was short, three-day week, and then last week I put in over twenty-two hours overtime, so I'm gonna get a couple days off. Get my bearings, so, uh, get rested up a little and get back at it, so the rink might have to wait a couple days.
Report on the, uh, lighting, you mentioned you replaced a thousand bulbs, uh, an update on what kind of a shape the, the rest of the, the lights, the sockets, the, the wiring itself?
It's, uh.
Really bad? We've got bare wire someplace?
No, it's not as bad as I thought, I think, uh, there are spots where it's, where it's so brittle that it's, it's kind of broken apart.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, you know, the, the eyelets are stuck out so far from the building that I don't think it poses any kind of a threat.
Okay.
It's, and the buildings are almost all tin up on top, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Everything seems sturdy, uh, just when you get shocked a few times, you start thinking.
Anyhow.
Especially when you're, when you're doing it, well, it's snowing, that's when it gets you.
Yeah.
No, I think it's really actually in a lot better shape than, than I had thought a couple of years ago, so.
I had a call this morning and I forwarded it on to you, I think it was this morning, and, um, I think it just, it's just cause for maybe a, a chance for you to, um, explain what the procedure is, 'cause I've had this mentioned to me a few times, people will, will shovel off their sidewalk and then the truck will plow come past and cover it up again.
Yep.
So what, how do you approach that whole thing?
Well, what happens a lot, uh, is cars will be parked, uh, while we, while we have our full town plow. And then when they finally move, we have to get that snow pushed back. Um, it's really hard to, in one pass, avoid some of that snow sliding into driveways, because cars are typically, I mean, there's driveways and sidewalks everywhere. But I've tried to implement that we need to get our plows, you know, uh, turn the other way, or we gotta try to avoid sidewalks and driveways when we're going past them. And there is a way to do it without making a big mess back in people's driveways, so.
Yeah.
Kind of in the process of.
Okay.
Re-teaching that, you know, you're, you're, maybe that, that thought gets lost, so.
At my house.
And if you do, we, I want us to go back and back drag it out, or, I mean, to go back and clean it up, because it's really not, uh, kosher for somebody to have to go clean another window in the driveway.
Right, or some people would have, you know, plowed or shoveled their sidewalks, now they gotta go do it over.
It's just simple consideration, I mean, we as a city need to.
Usually frozen.
I'm with people when they get upset, because I don't want us to be doing that, so.
Yeah, okay.
I clean up the window after every time it snows, 'cause I'm out at four o'clock in the morning cleaning the shower, and then the plow comes, but that's the way, I want the street clean, so I'm fine with it.
And it's not a perfect science, that snow gets slippery and can slide off the end of your.
Sure.
And sometimes you don't see it after you've done it, if you don't check it, check back, but, uh, trying to be more consistent without.
Good.
As a department being better.
It's a big pile of waste, 'cause it's first house on the corner, so everything that came from the block is there, and they turn the corner and.
The dump's right there.
And then I got a sidewalk right there as well.
No, it's frustrating, I, 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 I don't wanna hear those complaints anymore, but we'll.
Yeah. Well, it's good to hear that you yourself are concerned about that, and wouldn't want it that way if you were the homeowner, so.
It took me, it took me a couple of years to figure that out, and I, I know how to do it now, but it might.
Good.
We're working on that.
Good. Thank you.
That's good to hear.
Just on another related note, I know we talked previously in the budget meeting about the, the Christmas lights, and Kirby had a, believe it was like a thousand dollars for Christmas lights.
For, for bulbs, right?
Bulbs, correct.
Yeah.
And Kirby and I did have a discussion, and he does use that money to update lights as, as they need.
We have been, yeah, we have been, we, I'd hate to lose that, because you never know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had wreaths get, or our garland gets torn down and smashes all the bulbs, and those, those bulbs are costly, they really are, they're not cheap, and there's a lot of them, so.
Well, the majority of them staying outside all year, two dozen.
It's nice to. And we have strands that we put in trees and spots, and those go bad, and you gotta buy more strands, and it's, it's expensive.
Yeah, just an ongoing necessity, so to speak.
You guys did a nice job of getting the main street ready for the Arlington dazzle look.
Thanks.
Just, had some friends from out of town and they were just amazed, so.
Good to hear, good.
And we did, I received an email, uh, telling about a great job our public works, as well as our, uh, police department did in assisting, uh, with activities.
Yeah, for sure.
I know you put in a lot of hours, so thank you, Kirby.
Police put in a lot of extra to themselves. Yeah, no problem, feels good to help.
Yep.
Very much appreciated.
We're appreciative of all your help.
Anything else for Kirby? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirby.
Yes, sir. Okay, we have, uh, resolution seventy-four dash twenty eighteen in regard to Cibley County Pheasants Forever gambling permit.
Uh, the Cibley County Pheasants Forever is looking to conduct a raffle event on February ninth, and in doing so, we have to approve their, uh, permit, so looking for a motion to approve uh, resolution seventy-four, two thousand and eighteen.
Audrey, is it resolution seventy-four, two thousand and eighteen, Cibley County Pheasants Forever gambling permit?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Cowell, or I should say the resolution is introduced by councilmember Cowell, seconded by councilmember Batch, and that is resolution seventy-four dash twenty eighteen. Resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Cibley County Pheasants Forever. Any questions? Discussion, if not, we'll vote.
The date?
Um, February ninth. It is in the first paragraph, so it is on there, February ninth. Any other questions? If not, vote by roll call, councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Batch?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to new business, approve or deny hiring of Lee For- For- is it Forseer?
Forseer.
Forseer? For part-time snowplow driver.
Councilmembers, I, I put this, instead of putting this on consent agenda, I put it on, uh, new business, 'cause I just wanted to make you aware that we do have, uh, uh, two others who are, uh, current, uh, uh, snow plowing candidates, Mark We- Weeman and Taylor Weber. Uh, these individuals are basically eligible to help Kirby in case of, uh, snow emergency situation where he really needs help, so. Uh, we're glad to be adding Lee Forseer to that, uh, um, to that group, uh, and they will be available and, uh, receive training so that they can go out there and help with driving a pickup truck and, and plowing the snow during the winter, so.
I'd just like to make a comment, I worked with Lee at the Glencoe Golf Course for two or three summers, and he was a very dependable, um, on time. Came in early, opened up the buildings, got the equipment ready, um, all on his own, so I would recommend that we consider him for that position.
Is that a motion?
I'll move it.
Good.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Yashewski, seconded by councilmember Batch, to approve the hiring of Lee Forseer for a part-time snowplow driver. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Moving down to miscellaneous business, uh, councilmember committee updates, um, let's see, are there any committee updates at this time? Okay, and we'll move into the update on review of planning and zoning contract.
Councilmembers, just wanted to provide you with an update, uh, since we last talked, I believe, uh, several, uh, couple of council meetings ago. Uh, we talked about, uh, reviewing the planning and zoning, uh, contract, uh, we have looked into some other options and, and what that would, what would be available to the city. Since that time, uh, Rich, Mayor Nagel and myself have, have talked a little bit about it, uh, and feel strongly that, uh, that there is obviously some benefit to the fact that the current individual has some history. We did sit down and had a, a conference call with the individual to, uh, talk a little bit about how things are going and possible ways that it could be improved upon, and I think that, uh, we are recommending, uh, to the council that we look to go on a month-by-month basis, to continue to kind of assess how things are going, uh, with hopes that maybe there'll be, um, some, some changes in terms of more, really more handholding and working with people to go through that process, uh, and so, you know, it's certainly up for discussion, and the council can, can weigh in and, and we can go a different direction, but, uh, through discussion with the individual and through being aware of what other options are out there, uh, I think it's worth trying to, trying to salvage what we do have, uh, because that history is such a key component to keeping things moving, so.
I would just add, um, I think it's really important if we have council representation there at every meeting. I know there's some concern with individuals on the committee, along with the consultant that we have hired of, of maybe, uh, subtly leaning in a direction that is not in agreement with the council. And I, I think by, excuse me, by having a council representative there, um, it would help balance things out a little bit, and I think it's very important that that, that happens each and every meeting that they have, especially, especially when there are some significant decisions to be made, so, um, and I, I agree with city administrator Melvin that I think we need to just keep moving forward with the current position, the current personnel in place. I don't want to have us get caught with, uh, cutting ties with our current consultant and having nothing, nobody to lean on, and, um, I just, I think it, it warrants moving forward on a month-to-month basis and just, um, you know, monitoring how things are going, and, um, I consultant, Strack, uh, was very cordial in the conversation, seemed to be very open and accepting of the ideas we had, so, um, um, I really felt good about, about the talk we had, and, and hopefully it will, it will do some good, so. Open for discussion.
I guess the only thing I could say is, I guess if we try, we try, but I know that with the EDA, we made a change, and it was probably the best change the EDA ever saw by removing Cynthia and having Amy in there, because now the ADA, the EDA gets something done.
Mm-hmm.
Which it never really did, and I think that the majority of the EDA members would agree with that, and my concern is, now we're here, almost back with the same issue with the planning and zoning, and how long do we wanna play with the member?
I think one thing we had with the EDA that we don't have with planning and zoning is there was a, a noticeable clash of personalities on that group. Uh, I witnessed it one night, in that there was, there was, um, one individual going after another individual on a personal basis, not on a professional basis, and, um, at that time I stepped, I mean, after that meeting, I stepped in and made some changes as far as the, the, um, leadership in the EDA committee, um, and it, it helped some, at least we we probably got that, we didn't, well, we didn't completely eliminate the problem, because I know it's still there, I hear it, but at least that person that, that, uh, was one of the I, individuals in the personal attack is not in a leadership position on the EDA anymore, so, um, that was unique with that situation, but I agree with you, I think the, you know, the change that was made in EDA leadership, uh, from a consultant standpoint was, was a very good move, and, and, you know, there's been great things coming of that, of that group, so, um, hopefully, um, you know, hopefully things will improve and, and we'll see some positive things with the planning and zoning.
And I think one of the things that we talked about too is, is, uh, in January to get the planning committee, the council and the EDA together as a group, and to sit down and talk about what are our goals, uh, and this, you know, this doesn't preclude us from taking action, uh, if things don't change, and we don't feel that they're more in sync with what you as the city council hope to accomplish and achieve with, with the planning committee. This does give us a little more time to look into our options, and, uh, if you so choose to go that direction, you certainly will have that opportunity in the future as well.
And I would just add that the suggestion to meet as a joint group, EDA, planning and zoning, and the council, came from Ms. Strack.
From what was that?
It came from Cynthia. She felt it was a good idea to have a group meeting.
Oh, group meeting, yeah.
Yes, yes, so that was, I think that was a positive move on her part to sug- to suggest that.
Well, my thought is if, if, it sounded like you had a good meeting with the consultant, um, and she was open to the suggestions or the conversation, um, it's a lot easier to fix what you have sometimes than to go out and try and start all over again, because Ms. Strack does have a history with the city and has a lot of knowledge, so if that can all be worked into the program, that would be good, and some changes made, rather than trying to find somebody new and starting all over. Well, I would hope that the things that were suggested here and, and, um, hopefully in your conversation are taken seriously and some changes made.
I assured Ms. Strack that no one on the council has ever criticized her technical knowledge, she has more technical knowledge than, I think, probably as much as anyone will find out there. But it's, it's the communication, it's the just back-and-forth communication and, and working, going a little, you know, a little further and working with people, so, uh, and, you know, that communication can go both ways, I think, um, I'll, I'll take it certainly upon myself to be a little more communicative with her just on a month-to-month basis, just to see how things are going, you know, it's a relationship-building thing too, and, uh, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, uh, administrator Melvin will do the same, just to keep, keep the lines of communication open, so that, um, you know, we know what's going on as far as contacts that have been made, have been made with her, and she knows the things that, that we're talking about also, so.
I think one of the things in that position is when a person is looking for a variance or a, a something that involves planning and zoning, right away, the wall goes up, and, um, I think the resident or the citizen is on the defensive. resident or the citizen is on the defensive because what are they gonna try and find wrong? And then, and of course you get that sometimes headbutting and, um, I know it's not an easy job. But hopefully approaching with a smile and
Mm-hmm.
open mind makes a big difference.
And I, and I think we did bring that up during our, our discussion. We recounted a situation where maybe a, a better outcome would have resulted from more handholding and helping people through the process versus just saying, here's the information I need and leaving it up to them to get that information. It's checking in with them and saying, how is it coming? Is there anything I can help you with and following, going above and beyond, so. I think that's what we tried to convey. And she sounded as, if she was receptive.
I think the move to have a meeting with all the EDA, planning and zoning in the council is, is a great idea. It's gonna put all of us on the same page and that's where we need to be. We need to be one force right together. You know, trying to help people where we can, you know, and respecting the policies we have or adjusting them if, if it's, you know, um, too far one way or the other. And Cynthia does have a huge knowledge base of what's going on here and of that position, so.
So that would be our recommendation is to just keep moving forward on a month-to-month basis.
I mean, is the con- are we on a contract with her or just a month a month or?
Um, it is a yearly contract.
But you can provide notice within thirty.
Within thirty.
Thirty days.
Anytime throughout the.
End the contract.
Yeah.
So.
In either way, goes both ways.
Mm-hmm, you're right, right, yeah.
Well, that's not fair.
I know, right?
If, if I can maybe just take a, a step back, I, during our truth and taxation meeting, I did bring this up, but I did have an individual contact me. Uh, resident.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for written.
Joe, yeah, I'm sorry, I should have spoken up, but, uh, Joe Prasad, who lives at seven oh four West Main Street, uh, did contact me and fortunately he was unable to come this evening to the truth and taxation meeting. He wanted to bring to the council's attention that he read newspaper that there was going to be a twelve point six percent increase overall in, uh, taxes. And I explained to him that, uh, the city of Arlington was looking at, at a maximum of six percent increase. Uh, he asked that you, uh, consider doing everything you can to make that lower. And I did go through and share with him some of the projects that we were working on. And I also told him, I got his email and I said, be more than happy to send you a copy of, of our budget material. And then if you have any questions, certainly listen to you and go through and explain it, but a very pleasant individual and, uh, just wanted me to relay his concern to you as council members, so.
Okay.
I would like to have that in the, uh, included in the minutes.
Yes.
And then one more issue that I was going to bring up with you. I did have Tony Cluckel, uh, stop in and, and talk with me uh, today. Uh, one of the big issues that, uh, he was bringing up is, uh, uh, the challenges that they have over at the, uh, St. Mary's uh, with regards to, at one time they were talking about putting in, uh, tile line. Uh, I guess they have given up on that at this point, but they do realize they need to, to get some water, uh, drained away from there. Um, he has some concerns about the curb, which I know that we've talked about. Uh, the, the deteriorating curb that they have. We did not include that in the two thousand nineteen, uh, capital improvement budget. You know, maybe that's something we can take a look at mid-year. Um, but yeah, he was expressing concern about the drainage in that area. And I indicated to him that the project that we're going to be biting off for two thousand nineteen is over in the Clinton and Baker area, so, um, he just asked that I bring that up to you as.
Well, I know residents, uh, residents Dennis and Marion Van Marleham also have complained about the lack of adequate drainage over in that area, which is adjacent to the Catholic Church, so. It could be that it's all, the problem is all stemming from one source or one problem or one location. So, and I think we had talked with, uh, Jason Femright at one of the more recent meetings about maybe that's an area that sometime during two thousand nineteen, we can do some televising and find out. It may be as easy a fix as the one that was by the hospital entrance.
Right.
Um, but, you know, televising to find out where the, where the problem is, so.
I think it's on the north side of St. Mary's in that vacant field that
Uh-huh.
goes to the, what direction? East. From Good Sam's and by the fairgrounds of Catch Paces, I think they go east.
So that, does the water from that area go into that pond?
Yes, I believe so, according to what Jason was saying. Yep. That's the area that floods, the water gets a couple of feet deep in there and.
Right.
Takes a day for it to go away.
Tony mentioned there was a twelve-inch pipe which he thought should have been sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, that would probably handle it, but I, I think the twelve inches down to three inches or four inches, I don't know.
Uh, uh, Jason mentioned the same thing. I remember him mentioning about the pipe being, likely the pipe was undersized for that area, so.
On the curb at St. Mary's, didn't we talk about eight thousand dollars for curb replacement?
We did, yeah.
And that didn't make the cut?
No, it did not.
Now, I looked at the curb by St. Mary's and it is, you know, the surface is in tough shape. I don't see, is there any big chunks falling out? I don't, is it?
I think on the corner of Seventh and.
Maybe where plows have hit it or something, but I think it's just some bad cement, bad curb.
Oh, it's just deteriorating.
It's deteriorating all the way along, so I mean, it isn't that, that things are hitting it or anything like that. It's just the surface is just crumbling off.
Tony made mention of some, um, slab jacking and some things like that, so I don't know if that the curb is sinking.
That's right, that could be raised with slab jacking too, so, okay.
I don't know any sidewalks that are, I can't think of any right now.
I know.
Yeah, curb is a tough, I don't think there's a rougher look at a curb in the city.
I would agree.
Yeah.
She's pretty shabby.
Oh, there's, I'll, I'll take a picture of one sometime.
Another one, this is bad.
Oh, it's bad. It's just a short stretch, but in fact Kirby and I looked at it and, uh, we both agreed that, well, it's, it's not only curb, it's sidewalk. And, uh, he said, and the, the homeowner who lives there said, could you just take a, take the sidewalk out and get rid of it? I mean, it is so bad. I'll bring a picture sometime.
My neighbor?
Yeah.
Is it busted up or?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, there's one chunk up in the air and another one underneath it and it's, people can't even walk.
Yeah, and then you gotta trip down there.
It's, it's a big hazard, so, uh, but that's, it's just a small area. This, this curb by the Catholic Church, that was just some poor cement, poor finishing because it's the whole thing. Whenever, whenever that was put in, what year would that have been?
It was then when I came in seventy-seven.
Oh, really? So that never, it hasn't been replaced since, okay.
So it's been there a while.
Yeah, it has. Okay.
Forty years old?
I'll, I'll like me.
More than that.
Any other input, reports, comments? Hearing none, motion is in order to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, seconded by Councilmember Batchor to adjourn the meeting. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion adjourned, uh, meeting adjourned at seven thirty.
Curious, is anyone planning on going to the, uh, workshop in February?
Uh, the.
First and second.
I was thinking about the other one at the end of the month.
In Brainerd?
Yeah.
One or the other, I think I will go to, Ben. I'm not sure which one yet. I could go to our cabin and go to Brainerd. It's a half hour away, so. But I'll have to see what works out. Take a look at the calendar.
If everything is settled, then admin, I would, I wouldn't mind going.
Okay.
So.
And you'd probably go to the Plymouth one, I would guess, huh?
Uh, I could go.
Well, Brainerd is Brainerd, yeah, you got a camp.
Yeah, so I'd be, whatever, you know, you guys decide. I think there'd be benefit in going with you.
Hopefully I'll see all of you at our, uh, holiday open house a week from.